This regular city council meeting of the Oak Park City Council, September 21st, 2020, is called to order at 7:01 PM. Clerk Norris, would you call the roll?
Mayor McClellan.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Radner. I think I saw him.
He's there.
I couldn't hear anything. Were you talking about me?
Councilmember Radner, we just get roll call. I see you.
Present.
Councilmember Weiss.
Here.
And Councilmember Edgar.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Before we start our meeting, I'd like to call for a moment of silence. It's been a difficult season and especially tragic past 10 days. And we have all been touched by grief in some way. There is the constant drum bid, drumbeat of COVID deaths that are taking our brothers and sisters, sons, daughters, and parents too soon. Friday night, the nation lost Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. She inspired girls and women all around the world to stand up and speak out for human rights. But closer to home recently, right in the city of Oak Park, we have lost three young men. A 12-year-old visiting relatives here and two Oak Park High School students lost in a tragic car accident that stunned us all. These children were lost before their time. Right now, we join hands and extend our condolences to their devastated families, to their heartbroken friends, to saddened teachers and neighbors. And we wish them all the blessings of comfort and peace. Please, a moment of silence. Thank you. Next is approval of the agenda. Please add an item 16B, closed session to discuss pending litigation. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Next, we have a consent agenda. These are routine items approved without discussion. Regular council meeting minutes of September 8th, 2020. Special council meeting minutes of September 8th, 2020. Request to approve payment application number one in the amount of $131,306.46 to Michigan Joint Ceiling Incorporated of Farmington Hills, Michigan for the 2020 Joint and Crack Ceiling Project M698. And finally, licenses new and renewals submitted for September 21st, 2020. Their motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
And Councilmember Weiss.
It was not Councilmember. It was Councilmember Edgar.
Edgar. Okay, hard to tell. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Director Van Vliet, do we have any visiting elected officials?
It's actually Deputy Director Vecchio.
Oh, Lisa Vecchio. Any elected officials on the list?
No, it doesn't look like we do.
We're looking down the participants list here. Okay, I don't see visiting elected official. That puts us at item six on the agenda, special recognitions and presentations. And we have a 45th District Court renovations presentation. Since we can't do it in person, the staff has been kind enough to present this for us. City Manager Eric Tungay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have Assistant City Manager Kevin Yee, as well as Deputy Director DeCosta here. Kevin, I'm not sure which one I'm going to take it, but.
Yeah, I'm going to take it. Dave had provided a presentation. Lisa, did you have that presentation? There you go. Thank you. So this was in partnership with the City of Oak Park and 45th District Court. The key project features were HVAC upgrades, security upgrades, removal of the second-floor offices, new judges' chamber, which is an ADA compliant area now, whereas before it was a second-floor area without an elevator. New renovation of courtroom one, which is probably the most significant part of the project in a single project that we wanted to get done for a few years now. And we also created in-and-out-of-custody rooms, which were paid for from a Michigan Inageant Defense grant. So that's great that we were able to do some of this under grant funding. With the next slide, please. All right, these are some photos of the area. So in the photos furthest to the left, new security office. You can see that this was the area when you first walk into the front doors. They added a security office where the security officers can sit in a secured area and be able to witness everything that's going on and have video monitoring in that room as well. The middle pictures are the in-custody rooms. Again, these were paid for through the MIDC grants. So we have those that were completed through there. And then HVAC upgrades, HVAC systems on these buildings were in pretty rough shape. And they were all upgraded. So we are able to get those in and balanced. It did take some time to balance the humidity and other issues in there. But in the end, I think everyone's satisfied with the quality of the HVAC system. Next slide, please. Removed. The next one was before. Okay. There we go. On the way to the left, the area, there was a second floor, and that was where one of the judges would sit. And that brick facade on that was actually falling down. There were leaks in that building. The windows were bad. That HVAC system was bad. So we looked at the cost of repairing it as opposed to taking it completely off and moving those judges' chambers in the area below it. We chose to take that off simply because of the expense of trying to, just doing the repairs on that alone, basically would have been a project in itself. And it also would have needed, technically needed an elevator to make it ADA compliant. It wasn't a second floor with only stairs. So that area was decided to be removed. As you can see, these pictures kind of take you through different stages of the removal of that area. And in the bottom right is how it looks today. The second story gone. Next slide, please. This is the courtroom one.
It was an addition.
So this is, it's kind of hard to tell on the photos of how well this turned out and kind of what it looked like before as opposed to what it looks like now. But the upper left is what it looked like before. It was a wood grain, but it was a little dated. The chairs were absolutely terrible. We used to sit in those. They were really bad. And we used to have council meetings there, which now it's been four or five years since we've done that, and they were in terrible condition. So that was all removed. The wood was all sanded down and refinished with a darker, more mahogany type of finish. And recarpeting all-new judges' area, all-new benches for the customers, and a new jury box. And in the bottom right, you can kind of see what it looks like today. And it really, like I said, it really takes going over there to take a look at it, especially if you knew what it looked like before. But it is definitely a sharp-looking courtroom now as opposed to what it was before. I think that's all the slides, but I wanted to point out that Frank Rewaldson was the construction manager. They were the same company that did build our city hall and renovated the library and community center. They've done a great job for us in the past. OHM Advisors was the architect on the project. The project cost was about 1.55 million. Of that, a portion of that was, for economies of scale, since it was roofing work on it, we did put roofing work that we were doing on the community center and library into that project and completed that as well. But all in all, and there was a new fire alarm system and emergency egress put into the area as well. But all in all, the project went over great. I think the court has been pleased with it. And I think we're satisfied too with the work and the quality that was done on the project. And I look forward to the day when we can walk through it.
Yeah. Yes. This was, 10 years ago, this building was in sad shape. And the upholstered chairs had long since lost their springs. And it was a sad little building. And it'll be nice to be proud of our courtroom. Thank you.
Could I add something on that?
Please.
Well, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Kevin and Dave DeCosta, especially Rob Barrett, Joe Jenkins, I'm forgetting people I know, but there's Dan Fairless. There's so many people to thank on this great job, you guys. I just wanted to mention also that you may have noticed those stone pillars being constructed at the exterior parking lot of the court. And I just wanted to let you know, that's part of the fence project. And the fence will obviously run between those pillars when it's all said and done, but we're getting closer to that. So if you're wondering what that is, that's what it is.
Thank you. Item 10 is accounting reports. And we'd like approval for payment of an invoice submitted by Howard L. Schiffman, PC for legal services retainer for October 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020 in the total amount of $18,000. We always pay this one quarter ahead.
Skip item nine, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
You skipped item nine, special licenses.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Gracious mercy. Request for special events license submitted by Street Corner Music Limited, 26020 Greenfield Road for an outdoor monograph record sale to be held this Saturday, September 26th, 2020 as part of National Record Store Day. Is there a motion to approve this special event license? The $100 fee was paid.
So moved. Second.
Burns and Radner, thank you. In an effort to support our local businesses, I encourage you to come on out and check out this special event. We want to support our small businesses in the city of Oak Park. Is there any discussion?
Hi, Madam Mayor.
Please, yes.
I just want to say that this is really important too, to support this business because I know Record Store Day is traditionally held in April. And I believe it was rescheduled nationally this year because of COVID. So it's a big day in the record store industry. So if anyone is into that, definitely be a good time to come and check them out.
Great, thank you. Any further comment? All those in favor of approving this license, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Now we get to accounting reports for Howard Schiffman, PC retainer from October to December in the amount of $18,000. Is there a motion to approve payment?
So moved.
Burns?
Second.
Weiss, thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns.
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar.
Yes.
Mayor McClellan.
Yes.
Councilmember Radner.
Yes.
And Councilmember Weiss.
Yes.
Motion carried. We have no bids or ordinances this time, having exhausted our attorneys writing ordinances the previous few months here. We are down to the city manager section. City Manager Eric Tungay will discuss water and sewer rate project updates.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Just briefly, I know there's been a lot of discussion regarding water and sewer rates. I wanted to give you a brief update. We had a meeting of our task force last week. We're looking on the rate side. Everything, we're looking at everything from our rate model. And for those of you who don't know, we did a rate study that culminated in the creation of a rate model from Plant Moran back in 2014. We're doing rate comparison to other cities. I know at one time we had done this. We're looking at going out here and saying apples to apples, how do we stack up to other cities? We're looking at our infrastructure needs versus our capital spending on an annual basis. And how does that compare to other cities with similar needs? And finally, we're looking at billing and payment. I know there's been a lot of discussion about monthly billing, for example, for residential users. And we're going to be looking at that as well as other assistance programs that might be available to us. And possibly even credit programs like the ones you've seen that we brought forward as part of the stormwater charge changes. So all of this is going to be coming back. My goal is to have a PowerPoint presentation at the next city council meeting, the first one in October. And then we can go through a much deeper dive. We may even look to have a special meeting and include that on the special meeting so we can have a thorough discussion about it. But I wanted to give you that update because I know there's been a lot of talk about it.
You have been very busy.
Yes.
What is this task force?
Can you? So as I mentioned, the task force is looking at rates, infrastructure, billing, and payment incentives, all of the above. And believe it or not, a lot has changed since we did the first rate model and rate study back in 2014. Which, you know, we look at the rates every single year when we make our recommendation to you folks for your approval as part of our new city budget every year. But we're looking at possibly revamping that model to fit the changing needs. I mean, we didn't have a stormwater charge back in 2014, and we do now, for example. That's one change that we'll need to take into account. Among many other things, this is very complex. There's a lot of moving parts. And I know it's frustrating for a lot of residents and business owners. I can't tell you how many times in the last month I've heard people say, I'm going to move my business to the next city over because of the new stormwater charges, only to realize that the next city over has a stormwater charge just like ours. And I want to make it clear to anybody who might wonder, you know, we did not preemptively put the stormwater charge in place. I mean, for anyone who was following this at the time, we were part of a class action lawsuit that, you know, settled. And the settlement, as part of the settlement, we were required to, you know, portion out the stormwater charge. And for some people in our community, you know, that's been advantageous. But there are, for some, who have maybe larger properties, that's been not the case, and that would include the city. Our water and sewer bill here at the city has gone up, I think it's around $90,000, we're estimating as a result of this new charge, because believe it or not, the city is a water and sewer customer just like everybody else.
I have a, just a thought. And Eric, I want you to know that despite the, that it was nice the way you just said that, that there's been a lot of talk about it. I want to publicly apologize for anything that I may have done or said that was over the top. But I just want you to know that obviously it was in response to a lot of calls and emails and texts that I was getting about water bills. And the thing that, the thing that I just want to make sure that we focus on in this study. And I remember the Plant Moran study. I was relatively new to the council back then. That was probably around, I want to say about four years ago, five years ago. So that was right when I was, right when I was just starting. And I don't know exactly what the parameters were, and I don't know exactly what all the details of the study were. I remember what the conclusions were and what the recommendations were. But I think that's something we need to make sure of, is that the way we're apportioning the stormwater drain is fair. And I don't know if lot size is the most fair way to do it. I have no idea. But that's something that I am going to look for in the report whenever it is that we get the report from whomever it is that does it. So thank you for all the work you're doing. Thank you to your entire team. I'm sure there are names I know and names that I don't know. But I do anticipate reviewing this report in detail. So thank you.
You're welcome, and I appreciate you saying that. I just wanted to add this too. One of the things that, I think everybody knows, I'm going to single Kevin Yee out here a moment. But one of the things that I find most interesting, Kevin Yee, in preparation for this first meeting that we had, went through and, you know, took all of our infrastructure into account. And believe it or not, maybe you can't see this through the camera, but this is a study that we had commissioned back in 2018 from OHM. And this is, the basic premise of this study is we put a grade on our water infrastructure. And what I mean by that is we said, well, if it's five, it's in the worst shape possible. Or if it's in the red, it's in the worst shape possible. And what you'll find in that study is that a very, very large portion of the city's water infrastructure is in that red or five status. And, you know, just when you think we're unique, we're unique in that we're very aggressive with the way that we take on these projects, generally speaking. But we're not unique in that we have a high need for, you know, improvements to our infrastructure. Unfortunately, I think because water and sewer is below grade, people don't pay as much attention to the needs of the systems. The stormwater charge, you know, remember that, you know, size of your property is one aspect to how we arrive at that charge. It's also how much impervious versus pervious surface area do you have in that property? And one of the things that we're going to do a better job of, because I know our Deputy Finance Director Jamin Winters and our Deputy Director of Public Works, Dave DeCosta, did a wonderful job in all those town halls that we had discussing the new stormwater charges with religious leaders, business owners, residents. I think, you know, we did this during the pandemic. So all these town halls were done on Zoom. So we didn't get the kind of turnout we normally would. But one of the things we're going to do a better job of going forward, no matter what council decides to do, is doing a better job of communicating what is going on with our system, what are our needs? How did we arrive at the rate structure and so forth? And that's just having a concerted communication strategy so that people have a higher awareness than they otherwise would have. And, you know, Jocelyn Davis obviously will be a huge part of that as we go forward. I know that's a lot, but there's even more to come. Just wait.
Previews of coming attractions.
Yes.
Any questions on the process so far? Should we go on to the city clerk election update?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Clerk Ed Norris, if you could take this one for me, please.
I would. I'm actually, our Director of Elections, Lisa Vecchio, on to talk, to speak. There she is.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor City Council, City Manager. Just a quick update on the November presidential general election we have coming up on November 3rd, actually. We are currently in the process of preparing all of our ballots to be mailed, our first initial mailing of absentee ballots. We plan to get those out by the end of this week. So voters should be seeing those hit their mailboxes hopefully by the end of the month. We do have a large amount going out. So I'm sure people are anxious to get those. We have been getting lots of calls about that. And we are encouraging our voters to complete those as soon as possible and make sure that they get them back in a timely manner, allowing time for if they're going to mail them. But we would like to encourage voters to use our drop box outside of our building to turn those ballots back in. And they are due back by 8:00 PM on Election Day. But like I said, we are really encouraging voters to get those in sooner than that so we can, we have a large volume that will be out, and we want to make sure that we get all of those back in order to complement a timely manner. So just been busy working on that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that City Council has in regards to the election. But that is our update currently.
Will the drive-up drop box be available?
It will be available as soon as we receive it. We plan to install that outside of City Hall. And it will be a drive-up drop box, so you don't have to exit your vehicle, just drive up and place your ballot inside. We are, that is something that's coming through in order with the state of Michigan. So we're just one of the communities that's also still waiting for that to come in.
Madam Mayor, I wanted to remind everybody, we still, you know, we don't, we have a drop box now. It's not a drive-up drop box, but we do have a drop box right in front of City Hall.
Yes.
Madam Mayor? I have a question for Lisa. Are you by law allowed to count ballots as they come in, or do you need to wait till after 8:00 PM Election Day to start counting?
Absentee ballots can be counted. They cannot be counted as they come in. The law is that they can begin counting when the polls open on Election Day, which would be 7:00 AM on Election Day. That's when we start counting the absentee ballots.
And do you have extra staff on hand to do that this year?
We have, through council, there was a contract approved with Oakland County Elections Division, who actually is handling the opening of our absentee ballots along with many other communities within the county.
And I know, I think Clerk Norris had said at a previous meeting that there have been many more applications for AV ballots this year. Is that true?
Of course, yes. We have a huge increase in requests for absentee ballots. We're seeing a lot of those coming in. And any requests for a ballot we have received up until now will be part of this big mailing that's going out by the end of the week.
And have you noticed an increase in the number of voter registrations?
Yes, I would say so. Since the law changed back in 2018 with that proposal through that was adopted by the voters. Voters are being registered automatically at the Secretary of State's office unless they opt out. So, so yes, there's been an increase. Maybe if it's not us directly doing it, it's definitely coming from other avenues through the state.
Yes, please.
Just a note on that, and I'm not sure of the current status, but I believe Senate Bill 757 would allow processing of those ballots the day before, not counting them, but like opening and prepping them. So Lisa, I don't know if you know the status of that, if that's gone through yet or not, but I think it was moving along in the Senate and the House. So that may be possibly, you may be able to start processing the day before.
Yeah, we definitely were watching that. I believe it was passed in the Senate. I have not yet heard if it's been passed in the House.
I don't think it has, but I know they're.
I don't think that's come to the House yet, but yeah, definitely something that we'll be looking out for if it changes our process for this election, definitely.
Yeah, they're in session starting tomorrow, so I think there'll likely, probably more than likely be some a vote on it this week, I would think. I had a question regarding early voting, early absentee voting. If somebody were to come in, because I believe the ballots are available starting on September 23rd is when they can begin, we can begin distributing them, if I'm correct. So if someone were to come in on September 3rd and request a ballot in person, would they be able to get their ballot from the clerk's office?
The date is actually September 24th is when they have to be able to be distributed. The state law states that if we can get a ballot to you by mail in a timely manner, we are to mail the ballot. If there was a circumstance where a voter could not receive the ballot in time by mail is when they would be able to pick them up from our office. So typically, that happens closer to the election date. Or for example, if somebody happened to be going out of town and they weren't going to, they were worried about receiving it in time, then they could do that in person.
Okay, so I might be wrong, but my understanding was if someone were to come in and request a ballot. Okay, so my, so I I might be wrong, but my understanding was if someone were to come in and request a ballot, they could get one at any point. Are you saying that that's not true?
Um, I they they can get a ballot, but the way that the state law reads is that we are supposed to mail those out in a um, if we can mail it out in the manner that they can receive it in time, that's how we are directed to do that. Um, like I said, if it's if it's getting like too close to the election date and they are worried about receiving it in time in the mail, then that is something we can do um in person.
Okay, but I'm just to clarify, and I'm sorry that I'm I'm picking at it, but somebody asked me the specific question. Um, if someone was not on the permanent absentee list, they weren't on our absentee list, and they came in on September twenty fourth and requested an absentee ballot, would they be able to get one?
No, from our understanding, which you just said twice, I don't think they'll be able to get it in person on that day. Is that right, Lisa?
Correct. We would, we would mail that to them. If they if they came in on the twenty fourth, our process is to accept their application. And we have um by law twenty four hours to then put a ballot into the mail to them.
Okay. At one point, then, do are they able, like, at what date are able to come in and request a ballot if they don't get one in the mail?
Typically, we would do this like a couple of weeks before the election date. There's there's no, there's no set date that 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 legally we are allowed to to do that or that we are required to do that. Um, but by practice, we typically will do that a couple of weeks before Election Day.
Okay. And then last question, if someone has is on the permanent absentee list and they don't get their ballot at the in the mail, at what point should they contact the clerk's office, would you say?
Well, they being on the permanent absentee list won't automatically send them a ballot. They this would be if they had filed an application to receive a ballot.
Sorry, that's what I meant. They filed an application already um prior to the twenty fourth. And they, at what point would they contact the clerk's office if they had not yet received their ballot?
What we are telling voters, if they don't see anything in the mail, um, because they'll be part, if they filed an application before the twenty fourth, they will be part of our mailing that's going out at the end of this week. So we are telling voters if they do not receive a ballot by the first week of October to let us know and give us, give us a call and let us know.
I have a question. There were two places to check uh if you wanted an absentee ballot, August or November. And I wonder if people thought, well, this is for the August election, so they only checked one. Um, what would happen to those folks if they only checked the August election on that request?
Then they would, then that would mean they only applied for a ballot for the August election.
So what should they do to get one?
They would have to apply, apply, fill out an application for the November election.
In person?
They can still do that.
In person, online, any of those ways?
The easiest way to do that would to go be to go online um to Michigan dot gov slash vote. The Secretary of State now allows voters to complete that application online. It gets submitted directly to our office, comes through our our database, and we are able to then issue them a ballot.
Would you repeat that um website, Michigan?
Michigan dot gov slash vote. And there's, there should be a link on there that says, apply for an absent voter ballot.
Lisa, do you know the last day to do that? I think there's like a deadline to do that online.
Well, they can apply for a ballot up until um the last day to apply to receive a ballot by mail is the Friday before the election by five P M. And then after that, they can still apply for a ballot, but they would be required, um, which this would leave the Saturday before the election that we are open and the Monday um before, the day before the election, they would have to take care of that in person.
Thank you.
Any other election questions? Um, uh, City Manager Tungate, I think it's fourteen C.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to our new H R Director, Megan Burke. But I also want to congratulate the winners whom uh Megan will be announcing here in a moment.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I hope everybody is doing well. Um, so to what City Manager Tungate said, we are here tonight to congratulate and present to you as the council um our winners of the Wellness Challenge for twenty twenty here in the city of Oak Park. Um, it was a little bit different this year. Now, I wasn't here last year, but I've kind of caught up a little bit between human resources and kind of talking to some of the participants. Um, the pandemic really did change things, but I think that that's definitely one of the things to congratulate the winners on is their adaptability, um, and ability to continue with the challenge throughout the pandemic um in trying to stay healthy, um, and just kind, you know, absolutely trying to win the challenge. Um, so there were different points given uh based upon activity, based upon whether they attended the wellness center um to get some coaching and follow along with what a um physician or nurse said at the facility to go through that. Um, participants had to prove out their activities as well. Um, and we really do again want to recognize them for not only completing this through the pandemic, but also because um as as uh, you know, if you are aware, we are self funded with our health insurance. So things like this incentivize, um, not only incentivize people for healthy living, but also help drive the uh down the cost of healthcare. Um, so most importantly, though, we're about to get to the names, they get bragging rights in the city. Um, they have some photos that Deputy City Clerk Lisa is going to share with you. Um, you can see photos of the winners coming here in a second. Um, and then there also is a very beautiful trophy. Uh, you could see it right there. And if you get to pop in the lobby, you'll see it. It has everyone's names engraved on it. Um, so here you have our winners. We have Lori Stasiak, Dave DeCosta, Dana Hacker, Maureen Bergman, and Joseph Jenkins. They are actually all here on the call. And then Leonie Greaves, um, she is a part of our Oak Park Library. She is not pictured. And I do not believe she was able to attend um tonight. So a big hand clap for the winning team, number five. Um, and then in addition to the winning team, um, we also were able to choose the highest performers from each other team. Um, so if you go to the next slide, you will be able to see, oh, look, everybody's pictures. So on here, you'll have Jennifer Wilson, um Lieutenant Sean Tetler, he was unable to attend tonight um due to a training. Lisa Vecchio, she's on the call as well. Uh, Officer Devin Benson is in the same training, so he is unable to attend. Um, we have Lori Stasiak on Team Five, our top performer, and then we have David Pitts. Um, so a big congratulations to everybody. Um, and we look forward to planning the twenty twenty one Wellness Challenge. Um, again, I know last year we were able to have the winners take photos with City Council. So hopefully, um, once we get through COVID, we can revisit that. Um, and I'd love to answer any questions.
Great job, everybody.
Yes, congratulations on being healthy.
I have a question.
Yeah.
The uh, the the picture that we saw of the group of five people, that was a team that won?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay. No, because when I saw Dave DeCosta there, I knew it was nothing he did. So his team must have worked really hard.
Poor Dave.
Can't can't wait to see you back on the ice, Dave.
Uh, cute.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Madam Mayor, members of council, that completes the City Manager Report for this evening. Thank you.
Right. Um, next we have call to the council, and I will um turn that over to Lisa Vecchio, our Assistant um Director.
Call to the audience.
Uh, we got um call to the audience, correct.
All right, um. It looks like Helene is on here now. I know she we had a.
Yes. May I speak?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm sorry I'm late, but I was ended up on another call. But Helene Zach, County Commissioner, and I wanted to give you um some updates that are going on in the county. Uh, first of all, we continue to invest the two hundred and nineteen million dollars of federal CARES money within Oakland County. And one of the ways that we've are doing that um is investing twenty eight million dollars in in school systems. And we've spent a lot of time on dialogue. How do we improve things? Uh, we hired sixty seven public health nurses to help school systems get ready for COVID. How do you wash your hands, doing building, you know, uh tours? Helping, you know, hopefully bring students back safely. Um, and then this allocation of the twenty eight million dollars was based on thirty five percent of the funding went for economic disparity in systems. Thirty percent of the funding i- as far as formula, student population, um, special education and staff ra- ratios. And based on that, the school systems in Oak Park, Berkeley is getting five hundred and sixty one thousand dollars to help on COVID response. And it could be broadband, it could be tablets, so forth. Ferndale Schools is getting six hundred and forty one thousand roughly. And Oak Park Schools is getting a million twenty one thousand dollars. And this is all to help address things because of COVID. And, you know, uh, the county's been working closely with the um Oakland eating intermediate school system. There has been a lot of communication between school board members in the in this group and meetings to figure out how best to do this. Um, I do want to let people know that there was additional funding that's been released for childcare organizations. And if, so if you are a licensed daycare provider or a group home care provider, there is a newer grant opportunity that has been issued using the CARES money. And United Way is going to be distributing, selecting these people. They've worked for us on our nonprofit grants. And so if you're interested, you can go to the United Way um Google. I don't have their website right away, and you have the oppo- opportunity to apply for sorry, to apply for um a grant that way. Um, we are, we are um, the Oakland, the Parks Village is become, is coming before the voters in November. And historically, it's been point two five mils. And that does not cover all of the operational expenses of just maintaining our parks. And unfortunately, there has not been funding allocated, enough funding allocated to take care of just plain old maintenance in the parks. So they did a very fine study, doing an inventory of what we have, looked at any possibilities of downsizing some property. Most of the property we cannot downsize because it's been given by estates or the D D um D N R. Um, so by doing all this, there is a recommendation to raise the millage ask to point three five mils. And so I know it's a very sensitive time to be asking people for any increase. But at the same time, I also know many people, myself included, I've been going to parks more because it's one of the things that I can do safely, you know, is exercise, get outside, and that people are using the parks more. And so investing in this. So this is coming before voters on November third. Um, wanted to bring it to your attention. There is an invitation only event at Katalpa Oaks, the park coming up in a couple of weeks. And they have done a bunch of renovation finally at the park, at that park. And again, we didn't have the funding, and I've been championing that. But they did renovate several soccer fields. There's a very beautiful, you know, there's a track there, there's great play structure, there's wonderful bathrooms. And, you know, they are really kicking it off. And it's, this park is, you know, one of our closest Oakland County parks, and it is used for baseball and soccer continuously. Um, other things, we had the economic forecast luncheon today. And things are stable. Oakland County is doing better than many places. You know, really, we hope to have more stability sometime mid twenty twenty one, more into twenty twenty two. And we are still trying to do a whole lot more for our businesses and, you know, wherever we can help them. So other questions for me?
I do have a question.
Sure.
So it's fantastic that um the schools in our neighborhoods receive so much money. How was the money distributed? What was it based on?
Okay, so the formula, it was a formula. Uh, based on thirty percent population, thirty five percent economic disparity, fifteen percent special ed students, twenty percent staff. So, and these are known numbers, went through a formula, and based on that is how they allocated the funding.
And you say it's COVID related. So what do you think, how do you think most school districts or these school districts are gonna use this money?
Well, P P E, extra cleaning, Plexiglas, safety, um, tablets, broadband, teaching materials. You know, these are some of the things that I can think offhand, you know. You have to have different cleaning procedures. Once you have sanitizer, you know, spacing. You know, it's really guidelines, but you know, there's an Oakland, Oakland County came up with a uh toolkit for schools, you know, suggested things of what you should be doing.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Why are you gonna retire?
Well, thank you for asking that question. So I.
I would vote to not allow you to retire ever.
Well, so I appreciate that. So I've had the privilege and the honor to serve as your county commissioner for eighteen, almost eighteen years. It will be eighteen years at the end of um in December thirty first. And my biggest reason for retiring is I need flexibility and autonomy of my personal calendar. And um I, my children live out of town. My grandchild lives in London, England. It is very challenging to go visit her, especially during COVID. And looking at having, you know, I can't miss meetings. Um, and I can't, it's hard to schedule vote, you know, schedule visits to my family members, given my public calendar. So that's my first and foremost reason. It's time.
Enjoy your family and thank you for your dedicated service.
Thank you. I you haven't lost me yet. I'm still with you till the end.
I know, I know.
I want people to be misled. It's not an election, some, some people leave an election, but I'm with you.
Right, right, right. Okay.
Thank you.
And I understand she is training up her replacement.
Trying, so thank you. Trying to mentor my my future commissioner. I'll work for you.
Good, good things are happening in Oakland County, so we can all be excited.
Absolutely. So, thank you.
Okay, uh, is there anyone else for um call to the audience?
Assistant, I have Kenneth Sherman is looking to speak. If anybody else would like to speak, please raise your hand. Um, you can do that by clicking the the doubt at the bottom of the participants. Um, you might eat by your name, you can uh raise your hand or just shoot a message in the chat, and we will, we'll get you off of that. Mr. Sherman, you can, you can speak now if you wish.
Hey, thank you. Good evening and Happy Jewish New Year's to everybody. Um, had three things I was looking for feedback about. One, I wanted to know if there's any update regarding a dog park, you know, park, either a city or county dog park. Um, that's my first item. Um, that's my first item. My second item is, at the September 8th Special Assembly Council meeting, I was uh, appointed to a library advisory board position. And I noticed when I was reviewing the minutes of that meeting today, that people that were reappointed to the different boards and commissions received three-year reappointments. And the three individuals who were appointed as new members to the library advisory board were only appointed for two years. So I wondered why there's a discrepancy between reappointments and new appointments. And then my third item is an item I brought up two weeks ago regarding transparency, regarding the payment of legal fees to outside attorneys. I still don't understand, without violating attorney-client privilege, like for today, when the city council approved $8,000 uh, for legal fees, why you cannot tell us what those funds are being paid for? What is the nature of the case without violating, again, attorney-client privilege? Thank you.
Um, as far as I know, all of the terms to the library board were changed to two-year terms so that reappointments and new people would all get two-year term. We did that because we thought it was going to be hard to get quality people to agree to a six-year term, which had been the previous um, term. And uh, two-year was uh, more reasonable. Um, uh, Dog Park will have to talk to Recreation and see where they are on that planning. And uh, City Manager Tungate, can you um, get more specific on legal fees uh, on this uh, for Schiffman?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, the, the bill that we saw tonight, keep in mind um, uh, the Schiffman Fournier uh, law firm is a, is a outsourced um, legal firm that does our labor legal work. And they do not charge us an itemized bill. They charge us a flat fee um, every quarter. So the bill for them does not change. Not to mention, and I, I'll defer to our city attorneys, um, Courtney or Ebony on this, but not to mention, you know, some of these things are subject to attorney-client privilege. So, you know, a lot of these itemized bills, we, we do not have to uh, show to the public. And nor should we. We're involved in ongoing litigation in some cases where there's sensitive information going back and forth.
Can I add to that just for a second, please, Madam Mayor?
Please.
We include what we can. There's really not much that happens that, that we can talk about, that we don't. When something's in active litigation, for example, and we have to pay our attorney, let's say $5,000 for legal fees rendered, all we can really say is here's the name of the case, and here's the bill. We can't really get into what they're doing because if we have to itemize that and, and show people what was going on, we'd be tipping our hand to our, to our opposition, to the, to the other side. And uh, you, it's really dangerous to do that litigation. I know that because I'm a litigator. So, and I'm, and, and just to Mr. Sherman's point, I misunderstood him last time we spoke. And uh, I thought he was kind of saying, why is there attorney-client privilege? He, he articulated his point very well tonight. And um, we really share what we can. And things that we can't share because it's just, it would divulge too much and tip our hand. We just, we can't divulge it.
Is there um, Director Vecchio or anyone else?
Mayor, I just wanted to address, I just wanted to address um, Mr. Sherman's query about a dog park. So, yes, it's very exciting because the Parks and Rec Commission has been looking at dog parks. We've visited several, and we are um, actively working on one for a park. Right now, we're at the beginning. Um, it's going to take a little while to assemble everything and figure out how it will all work. But rest assured, we will have a dog park within the next, hopefully, two years or so, two, three years. That's not a promise. That's just, we are working on it. It does take some time, but we will have a dog park.
Thank you for the update. Um, Assistant Director Vecchio, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak?
I don't see anyone else at this time.
Okay, um, that uh, brings us then to call to the council. Um, Mayor Pro Tem Burns.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Have a pleasant evening. Kudos to the wonderful staff that attributed to the court project and all the other hard work you guys have been doing for the week, for the month, I mean. Have a good evening, be safe.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Councilmember Edgar.
Um, good evening. Thank you for showing up, members of the public. And thank you to the city for all the work that you continually do. Um, I don't look forward to, I, I look forward to seeing the new courtroom, not to being a litigant or having to spend much time there, but it looks good. And then I also just wanted to um, just cite a statistic that I think is really very, very frightening and very sad, which is that in this country, about 1,300 children are killed by guns every year. And Americans have a love affair with firearms. And it, it affects our, our children. It affects all of us, but when kids are killed because a parent or there's a gun in the home child knows about, it's, it's a tragedy. It's criminal, actually. We lost a 12-year-old child uh, about 10 days ago in Oak Park. He was visiting from another city. And an older child knew where his father kept a gun, took it out, and guess what? Here's another statistic. I implore anybody who owns a gun to keep it locked up. Don't tell your kids where it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Radner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One thing that I do want to say is that we talked a lot tonight about elections and about voting and about what you need to do to get your ballot and to cast your ballot. Obviously, with all the talk that happened tonight and in general, on a national scale, I think it's pretty obvious how important elections are. Um, but all elections are important, and I'm not going to sit up here and pick sides or do anything like that. Voting is incredibly important. Everybody really has an obligation and a duty as an American to do it. If not a legal obligation, it's a moral obligation. And, you know, when I'm not on city council, what I do during the day is I'm a lawyer. And my focus has become civil rights. I've been focusing on civil rights almost exclusively for a number of years now. And I can tell you that the law that's created by federal judges, who are appointed by the president, that law has an unbelievable effect on everybody's life, whether you know it or not. And with the passing of somebody who has authored some brilliant, brilliant opinions, she was an absolute civil liberty and civil justice crusader. She fought the fight. She really, really did. She dedicated her life to fighting for equality, for truth, for justice. And uh, she's going to be tremendously missed. Um, obviously, I'm talking about uh, Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg, a blessed memory. Um, I really hope that her replacement understands the gravity of the seat that he or she is going to fill and uh, and the importance of, of that seat being nonpartisan. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Weiss.
Good evening, everyone. Um, uh, several of my council members have already shared some very important points. Um, one other important point that I like to touch on every week or every, every council meeting is the census. Um, we are currently at 79.1% response rate in Oak Park. Um, we can do much better. If we're anything below 100%, we are, that is not adequate. We need to have 100% reported response rate so that we can get 100% of funding for our local communities and our schools and programs. And we can get full representation um, for our, for our area. And so it's very important, if you have not filled out the census or if you know of anyone or you think you may know of someone in our area who's not filled out the census, please reach out to them and remind them to do so. Um, it's critical to do that. Um, additionally, I just want to um, encourage everyone who is still um, getting used to virtual learning. Um, all parents out there, teachers, students, um, we're all in this together. We're still figuring it out. I encourage parents to check in on their kids frequently because this is a very difficult time for them, adjusting to this new way of learning. Um, and I know several of my students um, have been struggling with their mental health during this time. Uh, so just be patient with each other, make sure you check in on your kids, um, see how they're doing. And uh, uh, as Councilmember Rad- Radner so eloquently put it, please make sure that you vote. Um, it is essential because all elections have consequences, whether you vote or not. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you. Thank you for here. Passionate comments this evening, inspiring, really. Um, we uh, we'd like to thank the returning uh, members of our boards and commissions for serving the city for another uh, term. Uh, I'd like to welcome some of the new uh, people who signed up for boards and commissions. Andrew Larson is our new member of the Board of Review. Um, three members have been appointed to the library board. Al Elvin, Nosan Deitchman, and Ken Sherman, welcome. And thank you for your service to the city. We appreciate you so much. Um, Kroger has started hiring. If you go to jobs.kroger.com, uh, tell anyone looking for a job that that's available. Um, we have a we have uh, an event coming up this Wednesday. The next farmer's market is going to, um, you're going to be able to uh, get your flu shot. And it's especially important this year that you don't get the regular flu uh, in addition to the COVID flu. So uh, please come on down and um, all the insurance, bring your insurance card. Come on down to the uh, Oak Park Farmer's Market, starting from nine to two. Um, and get your flu shot and participate. There are also going to be some of our Oak Park businesses there. So come on down if you are available and support our businesses. And speaking of businesses, this Saturday, September 26th, is Downtown Day. Been named by Governor Whitmer. And we have a lot of corridors. We don't have an official downtown, but we still have our local businesses. Uh, and you can help by shopping a local business, dining, attending an event, or volunteering. Uh, please come on down, keep our, our little precious businesses going. Um, speaking of precious businesses, we have uh, two Oak Park artists that are, are in the Backyard Art Fair. Uh, you can go to Facebook Events, Backyard Art Fair, and uh, get the um, the locations of these events. Um, we have two Oak Park artists, one on Oak Park Boulevard. Um, and she does wonderful art, so support our artists as well. Um, go online and find Backyard Art Fair. Thank you. Uh, thank you for coming. Um, we are now going into closed session. I don't believe there's any, there might be a vote following the closed session. Uh, so right now, if there are no uh, further comments, I would like a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation in the matter of Crown Point Limited versus the City of Oak Park, Michigan.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. A roll call vote, please. So, City Clerk Norris, can we have a roll call?
Absolutely. Councilmember Edgar.
Yes.
Mayor McClellan.
Yes.
Councilmember Radner.
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Burns.
Yes.
Okay, um, we are in closed session, and we will begin when uh, we're assured that this um, will not, will not be filmed. So Benny, I guess we need some input from.
And Madam Mayor, we'd like to make sure that the city assessor, Erin Powers, is staying in the meeting as well, please.
Thank you.